Good evening. It is Monday, April 23rd, and it's 7:20 PM, and I call our city council meeting to order. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am looking for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Broda.
Second.
Second by Cahill. Any further discussion?
Possible to pull accounts payable off the consent agenda for a couple of quick questions.
All right. Any other additions? All right. So the motion on the table is to approve the agenda with pulling accounts payable off consent. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Let's do accounts payable first then. Go ahead, Councilmember Faye.
Will the $5,000 to Ebdow, Eck, and Myers pretty much wrap up our audit fees?
Yeah. Yep.
And maybe Dominic can answer this one. We bought a sound system?
Yes, so as part of our, part of the Maple Plain events coming this summer, we've been borrowing a lot of items to put on our movies, so this is another piece of the puzzle. Not all of them, but we're getting there.
I figured that might be what it was. And down Interstate Power Systems, back in February, we approved portable generator inspections, lift station generator inspection, and water treatment power generator inspection. Two months later, they're back on the accounts payable.
Sure. I'll look into that. I don't know, maybe it was, maybe it was mistyped or something there. I'll look into that.
Okay. And then the last one, it's just clerical, the police administration?
Yep, already changed it.
Got it.
And I did have a question about that sound system. It's under the rentals. Is that like a subcategory of the?
It's just what we have as a budgeting. It's kind of just what the line items are called, but...
Okay, so like, for example, with the community events, the rentals would have been a part of that, or is that?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. That's all. All right.
Yep.
That is correct.
Any other questions regarding accounts payable? Okay. With that, looking for a motion to approve accounts payable.
I'll make the move. Go ahead.
Moved by DeLuca, second by Fay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, with that, looking to approve city council business meeting minutes on March 26, city council workshop meeting minutes on March 26, and city council workshop meeting minutes on April 9.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Broda, second by Cahill. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. This evening, we have some administrative reports, letters A through E, City Engineer, April report, City Planner, April report, West Hennepin Public Safety March Report, Public Works, April report, and City Administration, April monthly report. We have read all of those. Does anyone have any questions?
I'd move we approve the reports as published in the packet.
Okay. Motion on the table by DeLuca, looking for a second.
A second.
Second by Broda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. With that, I will turn it over to our administrator for the quarterly financial report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. It's that time of the year where we like to give an update on kind of how the budget's doing. So this is the first quarterly report. Typically, this would have been done in March, but given our presentation on the 2017 audit, we pushed it into April here. So there's a couple of things to look at. One, the percentages really should be more quarterly-based because the bills here that are being approved tonight have not been included into the percentages that you see up here on the screen. That's why you see community events at .1%, when really, we just purchased some speakers that'll take it much higher than .1%. Our general fund's a little bit higher than the 25% mark at this time, and there's a couple of reasons why. A lot of our auditing and accounting purposes have, that dictates. Our audit is done at the end of April, or end of January. It's one of the very first cities done. So that sucks up a lot of resources. It's kind of, that's really front-loaded for the first quarter of the year, so that explains that piece a little bit. We've paid half of our assessing bill already, so we have an $18,000 assessing budget that goes to the county. Paid half of that already. And then unfortunately, our workers' compensation insurance went up about 30% from last year. And that was after the fact of when we set the budget. It just had to do with some unfortunate mishaps that we had the following year that affected us negatively there. We've also had, in abundance of snow plowing, we've had to pay out a little bit of overtime as a result of that, which was, we don't budget for any overtime, but we had no choice this year on some of that. So that's another fixture of why our general fund's a little bit high. Nothing from staff's point of view to be worried about that we're going to be over budget or anything at this time, but just something to be mindful of looking forward. You can see our community events fund, like I said, is going to be going up, but we should have no problem staying under budget for that as we have all the control over spending there. Our water fund is pretty much right on schedule there. There's nothing too dramatic in the water fund. Our sewer fund's a little bit below. Our stormwater fund is a little bit high, but it has to do with the bond payment that we made that came out of there. That's why it's at 43% there. We do have some, we do have a bond payment that hasn't quite reflected the sewer fund all the way yet, so that's why it's a little bit under that 25% number. Otherwise, those expenditures are pretty, they pretty much stay at a 25% clip throughout the year. In the summer, you may see a little bit of a jump if we do any lining of a project or something like that, some contract work, but otherwise, this should be kind of at 25% clips all the way through the year. Our fire is up a little bit at 38%. That has mainly to do with, there's two things. We've got a, we've got a journal entry error that shows managerial fees were paid three times to the city, so we've got to clean that up. That's about $10,000 that shows incorrectly. But then also, their annual fire pension check they get was already issued this year. The idea in how it was approved by the Fire Relief Association is that they want that check as soon as possible in the year, so that they can then have the entire year to get the investments off of that dollar amount. So that is a larger expenditure that comes out in the very beginning of the year, which then, which then obviously affects the quarterly budget at this point and why it's a little bit high. Looking at revenues, the city has received 6.4% of their scheduled revenues, which sounds scary for 25% through the year. But in reality, the city receives about 77% of their, of our revenues are through property taxes, and we don't get our first collection point for property taxes until May. So I look at that 6.4%, and I multiply that by four, that's 24%, 25%, and we need 23%. So I like to think we're a little bit ahead on revenues right now, but that's how I look at it. Our water sales are at 25.5%. You can kind of look at all of our enterprise funds there with water, sewer, and storm that are around that 25% area. Last year, you might know as a note, we finished the year at around 75, 80%, and that was because of, we switched back to quarterly payments. So this year, I would expect that full 100% you're going to be getting in here. So just kind of a heads up there, like, that's going to be good for this year. Other than that, nothing, nothing's too alarming on the revenue side. We're in good shape. I know I didn't make a note on the fire department, but I knew, I do know the fire department is on schedule as well. They're a little bit below that 25% line, and that's just because they haven't received, their 2% state money comes in later on in the year, and actually, I believe that's December they get that money. So it's, it's, we're at like 23%, but both independents, Maple Plain have been paying our shares, and yeah, things look good there. But with that, I'd be happy to answer. Any questions pertaining to the quarterly report?
Any questions for administrator regarding the financials? All right. With that, I'm looking for a motion to approve the quarterly financial report.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by Fay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to new business, and our first item is Resolution 18-0423-01, sale of Series 2018 A Bonds, and we'll turn that over.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers. Todd Hagan from Ellers and Associates, your municipal advisor. We helped sell your bonds today. We took bids up to 11 o'clock this morning. You competitively sold your bond issue today. So in your packets, you do have a sale day report from me that sort of outlines what, what happened, kind of where we were, and where we ended up then today. So also in your packets is a bond resolution from your bond attorney, Eckford Lammers out of Stillwater. If you like what you see tonight, you can consider passing that at the end of, end of my little presentation here, so. So this bond issue sold here at $1,950,000. It's an improvement bond. Finances the 2018 street and utility improvements. Just kind of go through, kind of cut to the chase first, and we can kind of get into the details if you have any questions, too. I'm here for that. The bond rating we received on, on this bond, it was, remember, both an underlying rating, which is the city's rating, and also it qualified for state guarantee. We've issued these before with similar guarantees, and as long as they're, you know, sort of utility-driven projects, we're able, through the Public Facilities Authority, to, to get this guaranteed by the state of Minnesota. So you did receive a AA+ credit rating on the, what we call credit enhancement to this, which is the state of Minnesota's rating, because they're guaranteeing it. Fits within that program. And your underlying rating, you maintain your AA, which is actually one notch lower than that AA+ with the stable outlook. So with both of those ratings, we received four bids today till 11 o'clock this morning. Baird out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin was your best bid. 25 of their sort of constituents or syndicates also joined in. So it was quite a show this morning, I'm sure, over at Baird, over in Wisconsin. Came in at a 3.2571%. That's a true interest rate that accounts for their fee that they take, kind of like points on a mortgage, in order to give, give you a, a market rate. So the second bid came from Northland Securities out of Minneapolis. They negotiate a lot of bond sales in this state, and they were at 3.3124. Stifel Nicolaus out of Memphis, Tennessee, 3.4132. And Bernardi Securities out of Chicago, 3.58. So, you know, with the AA+ rating and your, your AA-stable rating, you're able to reach out beyond sort of the five-state area here and get some, get some attention from other broker-dealers that are interested in this, in this bond issue. So the higher rating, the lower interest rates, right? That's the idea behind a bond rating. So you were nice enough, or smart enough, to competitive bid your bonds because kind of the pitch for the competitive bidding is if you look between the low bid and the high bid, it's like almost $82,000 of interest expense. So if you just went with, you know, number four here, you would have, you could have done better, I guess is the point there. So we competitively bid it, and, and we had them sharpen their pencils, and we found Baird out of Milwaukee, which is great. So then, because I had heard that you wanted to keep this at 1.95 million, we basically Baird, kind of gave you between a premium, and they took a little fee, and they also gave you a little bit of a premium, which means the premium actually lowered their fee a little bit. So we were able to use $12,236 and some change for basically the, the discount or the fee that we offered, which is a bidding parameter. They didn't take all that. Plus, the city will kick in, and you don't have to do this at closing. It's just at the end of the day, if you, if you need some extra money, it would come from cash, around $27,763. So we were able to take $40,000 off the bond to get it to the 1.95 million, I think you talked about. Yep.
Todd, for the cash portion right there at that 27, 7, 6, 3, 1, 9?
Yep.
So you're saying that has to be written out as a cash? Not at closing, it can be written out if we did, if we had bond ex, excess bonds that came in. Let's say if we don't go through all 1, 9, 5 million, we come in under budget. That would cover that equity contribution from the city?
Right, right, right. This is just if it comes in at the, that 1.89805 is kind of the project cost that we've been running under. That, that makes up for that difference then, yeah.
So the $27,000 is a contribution from the city?
If, if you wanted to, if, if the project cost came in at, at, at that as-bid amount, you know, plus engineering, plus contingency, right? At 1.89805, then you'd need a little bit, use a little bit of cash, right? Because we lowered the bond issue down. That's, that's why we, yep. All right, so, and that was what I was, so we were either going to bring it down today or would have brought it down last week to bid on, so we're just going to see if we got, if we got a full premium bid, you know, with really no fee from the underwriter, we actually could have brought it down. And you would have had, you would have actually had, it wouldn't have affected the project cost. I had a bond sale yesterday that we had $50,000 of premium on that, so that would, if we would have had that here then, we would have been able to bring the bond issue down, and then you wouldn't have had to kick in any cash to make up the difference, basically. Yep. So, so it looks like, yeah, it looks like the premium was generated off the, basically the first half of the bond issue. If you look at the rates Baird gave you there at 3%, it's a little bit higher, right, than the market rate there? So, so they're generating some premium from their customers there, and then they're, they're actually lower than, on the second half of that bond issue, lower than the, the market there. So it's kind of a balancing act of how they want to bid this and who their customers are. Basically, rates are so low to attract customers for that first half of a bond issue, they have to increase the, the rates, and then what happens is they, they get that production from their customers. So the customers are holding on to a 3% bond. When rates go up, that's more marketable for them than a 1.5% bond. That's how that works. And the bond buyer index looks like from the pre-sale report, pretty much stayed the same. We're at .04% lower than that pre-sale report estimate, and the, it looks like the market just went down a little bit within a month of .04. Hard to believe that it was just following it like that, so, so pretty much was spot-on from our, from our estimates. Your rating report, kind of the cut to the chase there, Bobby did a great job a couple weeks ago. We were on the phone with folks in Chicago, about an hour conversation. We did have a draft of your audit at that time, too, which, which helped. And, and you folks are, really, you're at the AA and the stable outlook. But a couple of things went up kind of inside of that report, which I think are, you know, it's notable here. So your management score, basically, which counts for 20% of, of the rating, that, just that went up to strong, and I think after strong, it's very strong, and that's the top then. So, so you've got all, a lot of good policies, you know, you're following good planning, keeping your reserve levels, you know, where they should be pursuant to your policy, so you're good there. And then the budgetary performance, which is kind of how you, how you're running throughout the, throughout the year, if you're kind of following that budget, and that went up to a strong level as well. So although you maintained your AA and stable outlook, you did go up internally in a couple, a couple of those methodology credit ratings, so. So management counts for 20% of the score, and that budgetary performance is 10, so, and the economy's 30. So there's a few things that you, you know, you can control. Can't control the economy much, a 30% of the score. Debt, you kind of need to, you know, issue as you go for certain things in the city. But, you know, liquidity, budgetary performance, flexibility, which is reserve levels, and management are 2, 3, 4, 5, 60% of the score. So keep up the good work. So just to kind of, I know, I know Mike always likes to see kind of how many bids we've received in the past, right? So you received four, and that looks pretty, pretty common as far as what we've seen in the last two months in our office. So you're right there with four or five bids, which is great. But in 2012, you had two bids with lower interest rates back in the day, right? They've gone up a little bit. Two bids in 2013, three bids in 2014, two bids in 2016. So you're attracting more interest there, which is, which is great. And that, again, the more, more underwriters and banks that kind of come to the table here, the, the better it is for you guys competitively speaking, so. Again, in your packet, you know, we've got the bid tabulation, sources and use of funds, and that bond is going to stay the way it is until you refinance it, and you get like nine years, and then you can refinance it eight or nine years if you want. Rating report and the bond buyer graph. Do you folks have any questions for me? Another really good bond sale, and I don't just say it, but, you know, you're close enough to the metro area where you get, you get looked at, and, and so... Appreciate the business, too. I want to mention that, as always.
Anyone have any questions for Todd? Anyone have any questions for staff? All right. Thank you, Todd, for your work and your partnership with the city.
You bet.
We appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
You bet.
With that, I am looking for a motion to approve Resolution 18-0423-01, sale of Series 2018 A Bonds.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Luca.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cahill. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLuca.
Aye.
Mayor Moskowsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Broda.
Aye.
The ayes have it five to zero. Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I read, and I hope everyone had a chance to, that S and P ratings report, a lot of, lot of good, healthy stuff in there, and kudos to Bobby, kudos to this council, kudos to the prior council. I think we've all been exceptional stewards of the city's money and responsible with it, and it shows in four bids and an interest rate that I believe is favorable. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item of business is Ordinance 295, amend Chapter 96 of the city code pertaining to small cell wireless facilities and vegetation. On that, I think I'm going to turn it over to our attorney.
Evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. You have a draft ordinance 295 in your packets proposing to change the city's current right-of-way ordinance to make adjustments and additions, and a couple minor corrections, contemplating the new small cell wireless law that was put into effect last year. The, the new state statute puts some significant limitations on municipalities' ability to regulate, charge rental, any number of other factors with these small cell companies. So we're given a fairly tight list of parameters that we're able to work within, and this is basically an adjustment to our right-of-way ordinance to contemplate those things. And there'll be a co-location agreement, which is to follow its reference within. We don't have any current applications, but the way this would typically work is if a small cell wireless company were to come to town and were interested in co-locating on city facilities with a right-of-way, it'd have to abide by the terms of our ordinance here and sign a co-location agreement that would entitle the city to a limited amount of rent under certain terms allowed by statute. These are to address all of those. You may recall, the last meeting, we addressed the zoning change that also was a part of that law, which allows the city to require a conditional use permit only if in residential areas, and otherwise, it's deemed to be a permitted use. So we addressed that, you know, post-public hearing, et cetera. None of that is, is necessary here, because this is not a zoning ordinance, but it's necessary changes to address for the new law. I've got to answer. Any questions?
Any questions? All right.
Oh, Madam Mayor, one other thing, I guess I should mention that. Administrator and I spoke about this one very brief addition. The reason you see the word vegetation on there also was just to control planting of future vegetation in the right-of-way. Is that something I know this council has discussed, wanting to prohibit absent specific permission from the city? That has also been added. Forgot to mention that, sorry.
I did have one question on that.
Yes.
Is there a specific parameter of how to obtain that permit and fees and all that anywhere else?
Sure. I, you know what? I don't even know if we've set a fee as part of our fee schedule on this permit. Really what it is, really what we're trying to limit here in the overall kind of thought process of this is that by making or having this permit available to the public, if the public was looking to plant any tree in the right-of-way, that is the primary reason for this, just because, you know, unfortunately, trees in the right-of-way has been found in various legal cases to be the liability of the city. So this is really looking at prohibiting trees in the right-of-way. If there was a resident that stopped in and said, "I'd like to plant some flowers in the right-of-way here," the city would have no reason to decline that permit. Is there a fee at this time?
No. I just want to make sure people aren't charged, being charged five bucks a hosta or something, you know? Or it gets ridiculous, but...
I think if anything right now, it hasn't been, obviously, it hasn't been approved yet, but if it's something that is, is not a, there's not a whole lot going on, I don't know if the city staff would address it as a fee at this time yet, unless it was something that we ran into on, on a regular pattern.
Really more to maintain discretion for trees and large intrusive vegetation.
Right, and that's, you know, the nature I saw here, but as written, you know, hostas are against the law. So I just want to make sure we had some kind of, you know, sure, clear cut parameter of the legal way to plant hostas and all that, so I'm sure it'd be down the pipeline, but...
Good questions. Any other questions? With that, I'm looking for a motion to approve Ordinance 295, amend Chapter 96 of the city code pertaining to small cell wires, facilities, and vegetation.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by Broda.
Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLuca.
Aye.
Mayor Moskowsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Broda.
Aye.
And Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
The ayes have it five to zero.
Our next item of business is the Maple Plain Small Wireless Facility Co-location Agreement.
Madam Mayor, members of council, as promised, this is the referenced co-location agreement from the new ordinance. We are required to have a uniform, kind of a generic agreement that Bobby and any, any staff would use with any permit applicant, so that, really, the, the reason behind the legislation is that people aren't given a different deal based on who they are, and, you know, they're all competitively treated the same. And we have a, kind of a standard deal for whoever comes to town. That's what this is. This is our standard agreement. It can be amended. This is one that, that was put out by the league a few months ago. I got a list for when it, when it became available. I made a few changes, like to bolster a couple parts, but by and large, this is the league's agreement, so.
The reason city council finds a new co-location agreement printed out separately than from their packet was just that staff identified a typo that we corrected and printed off the new one. It's on page three. It just said, instead of the city administrator, or the city administrator's designate, said the...
the city administrators designate as the director, so we just wanted to clarify that one point there. But that's why you have an additional copy in front of you.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask that.
Yep.
Any other? Go ahead.
I was going to make a motion to approve the co-location agreement.
Okay. Moved by Broda.
Second.
Second by DeLuca. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? All right, motion carries. Next item of business is Ordinance 296, adopting a procedure for mailbox repair and replacement due to damage by the City of Maple Plain.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This ordinance in front of you is to look at damage that occurs from city vehicles or from the use of city vehicles to mailboxes. So a little bit of background is that unfortunately, when you get 20 inches of snow like we were so blessed with last weekend, but when we move that kind of snow plowing and having our Public Works crew out, if, if snow's coming off a plow and hits a mailbox, it can cause damage. And in some cases, it can bring down the mailbox completely and wreck a mailbox if a plow wing hits a mailbox. Or if, just for some reason, we were driving a truck or something and we hit a mailbox, it's good to have a policy. I know that this, or in ordinance in this case, I know that this may seem a little, a little detailed, but given some of the experiences that I know that has happened in other communities, we feel that this is a good ordinance to have on the books. That just lays out a procedure of what happens. And some of those things that are in this ordinance include, the first thing, if a mailbox were to go down, is that our Public Works crew would go out and try to repair the mailbox without having to buy additional materials, mailbox materials. If we're not able to repair the mailbox, there are two options. One, we can write out a check for $75 that says, "We're sorry for this. Here's $75," or the resident can choose that we install a new mailbox for them. And so it's up to the resident to decide how they want to go about fixing that mailbox. Of course, uh... That's kind of the gist of it. I thought I was missing something in there. I'm like, did I forget something? No, I think it's all right there. So that's, that's really about it. If, yes, the temporary, you are right, John Fay. That's what I was missing. Thank you. If the mailbox does go down, a lot of the times in the winter months when we are plowing, it's just not, it's not, with the ground being frozen, it's hard to replace mailbox. We would offer then a temporary mailbox free of charge, and then we would address it then either with the $75 or full replacement once the ground is thawed. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions pertaining to Ordinance 296, addressing mailboxes that are damaged by the City of Maple Plain.
Does this include third parties that we hire? So they're technically under our contract?
Uh, as it's written, no.
Okay.
Probably not. This says specifically the City of Maple Plain, so if we're contracting out, they operate underneath their own separate insurance. Usually we're included under their policy, but that would not entail our policy. So as of right now, no, this would not.
How did the city decide $75?
That's a great question, Mayor. What we did was, we did a, anytime we list fee numbers or come up with any nominal dollar figure, there's research that we do. We looked at all the surrounding cities in areas that have a policy like this on the books, and most do. And this was right in kind of that middle point area that we thought was appropriate to come up with this dollar amount for the mailbox. Staffs also looked at purchasing, you know, what is the cost of purchasing temporary mailboxes or mailboxes to replace completely, and it's around this dollar amount. So this would cover a new mailbox.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
If I may, to address Councilmember Cahill, I was just reading back through a couple points. I think one of the main points that it might turn on for your question would be whether it qualifies as a city vehicle. Our position would be that if it's a third-party contractor, most of those contracts, in my experience, and we have a clause in there indicating that they are independent, and they would have their own insurance, they would be deemed to be a city employee's vehicle. Absent doubt, an argument could be made, I think, but I think that contract may provide some additional insulation.
I think if something like that were to happen, staff would look at that objectively, given this policy, and look at trying to make something work there.
Okay. Thank you.
No.
Great. With that, I'm looking for a motion to approve Ordinance 296, adopting the procedure for mailbox repair and replacement due to damage by the City of Maple Plain.
I'd love to.
Moved by Councilmember Fay.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cahill. Any further discussion? Just for point of discussion, I would just like to say that I will be voting no. I think that if someone has a $200 mailbox, that's what we, we should replace what we break. So I just want that on the record and want it to be explained why I will be voting no. All right.
Well, I think from a, from a comment standpoint, Madam Mayor, at some point, the council or the city's responsible for what we did. I get that. But there has to be a standard that you do. Just because I decided to put up a gold-plated mailbox doesn't mean that the city should be responsible for replacing a gold-plated mailbox.
I hear what you're saying, but I disagree. Just like if we were in a car accident, you replace what you have. So, all right. Any further discussion? All right, with that, it is a roll call vote.
Councilmember DeLuca.
Aye.
Mayor Moskowsky.
Nay.
Councilmember Broda.
Aye.
Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
The ayes have it four to one.
Next item of business is the Employee Handbook, revised adverse weather conditions.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. What you have in front of you is a memo that outlines our current employee handbook when talking about adverse weather conditions. One of the instances that we have ran into this, especially this winter season, is that previously, under adverse weather conditions in our employee handbook, it had listed that "The city shall follow the school closure policies of the Orno Public School District when deciding to close city facilities." So whenever the city or the school district, the Orno School District, decided to close down the district effectively per our policy, so was City Hall. And there were a few instances where, and I, I get it better than many most, than most do, that being a superintendent, it's a tough job and having to decide when to close school, but it, it's something that staff here and the mayor would like to have a little bit more discretion when deciding to close city offices. Not to take the decision that the Orno School District has made lightly, but just to provide and have that flexibility in case weather were to change by, by any standard there. So really, the language that did change here is just simply upon extreme weather conditions, "The city shall take into consideration the school closure policies of the Orno Public School District when deciding to close city facilities. Any and all decisions to close city facilities or cancel city programs will be made by the mayor and city council." So it just provides that option. That's the only change that we have here. This was recommended by the Personnel Committee going over this change. That's where this was brought up a couple, I believe it was last week, this was brought up. And the Personnel Committee is bringing a recommendation through this memo to change the Personnel Committee, our employee handbook, to this language.
Just to clarify, it would be made by the mayor and city administrator. We would not be contacting each council member.
By the mayor and city administrator.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
Just wondering, the "any and all" language, what, I don't feel like that adds any more to it. Well, is, am I missing something, or is it, we can keep it in there. I just didn't know if there's, it made it stronger, or...
I, I think, no, I think that might have been just the way I wrote it or the fact that, I mean, unfortunately, we have one city facility that's always open during snowstorms, and that's Public Works.
Yeah.
But I don't think, if you want to change the language...
No, it's fine. That makes sense then, like "any and all," meaning like the multiple levels of city. That's fine for me. I just was curious.
I think what this change or proposal is trying to drive towards is, the school could make decisions about roads or closing early that may not necessarily affect the operations of the city or a particular group that we would have. And interest of trying to get a kid home might not meet the same criteria that, that the administrator would use to decide whether to have a meeting or not.
And I was going to, I echo that point. I was going to make the same point. They're having to deal with school buses out on Coney Roads with 30, 40, 50 children in each one, and it's a, it's a, it's a tough decision. I know you know that from a superintendent's standpoint, but we're, we've got five full-time employees in this city, so.
Agreed. Completely agree.
All right, good.
Now, logistically, it doesn't, now that we're a tenant of the school, does that have any effect as to whether we have access to the building? I mean, I like, I agree with the change. I think it makes sense, but...
No. In reality, I, we have the full ability to open and close this, this building.
Okay.
Staff does. We, we haven't done a great job following this policy on two-hour late starts. We like to show up right away instead of waiting, but, and the building's always open there.
Okay.
But if it were to be closed and we were open, we would have the ability to open up this building to the public as before.
Great. Good questions. All right. So with that, we need a motion to improve the revision with adverse weather conditions, as, as written.
So moved.
Moved by Broda.
Second.
Second by Cahill. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? All right, motion carries. Next item of business is Fire Department Personnel Changes.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Before you is a memo written by Fire Chief Justin McCoy, and I'm going to go over some personnel changes that have happened that we do need council action on. Going over this, I, I feel like we could do one motion and maybe just approve them all as a bunch. I don't think they have to be done individually. But it's just a good time just to acknowledge some of these changes that are taking place. Randy O'Brien served 30 years within the Maple Plain Fire Department and is retiring this year. So there's 30 years there. That's, that's a pretty big deal. And Brian Swenson as well had 26 years of service and is retiring from the Maple Plain Fire Department. And those two members of the Fire Department have obviously 56 years of experience on our department, so that's a huge loss, but also speaks volumes of the service that they brought here to the community and, and how long and dedicated they are to our community. Dusty O'Brien is resigned from the Fire Department due to relocation. If you live outside of the fire district, you're not allowed to serve as a firefighter within the fire district. But from what I've heard as well, Dusty is looking at being active in surrounding fire departments possibly outside of the district. So that's exciting. We then have, we have four officers, and I'm going to talk about the first three, and then I'll expand a little bit more on the fourth one. Per our city policy that we passed 1501.6, we do need city council approval for these officers. As you, as council may recall, we have already approved Fire Chief, Fire Chief Two, Fire Chief Three, but now these officers additionally need to be approved as well. We have Rick Dennison to serve as Captain One. Jay McCoy is being recommended to serve as Captain Two. Ed McGinty is recommended to serve as Captain Three. In the past, we've had four captains, but this year, we have talked at the previous meetings as well about having a fire code inspector onboard. And Brad Kouser is being recommended to be a fire inspector, to be Fire Inspector One on our Fire Department. And as a result, he would fit that fourth spot for captain's pay, so there's no additional pay being created. There's not a fifth captain. It's the same as it was last year. We're going to have three captains and then a fire inspector. But Brad's been appointed the fire inspector, obviously, due to the fact that we do have city codes in line. They talk about inspecting commercial, industrial, and high-density residential buildings. And that needs to happen on a yearly basis in some of these buildings, and that is a role that Brad has agreed to take upon with our Fire Department. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any of these questions pertaining, pertaining to the Fire Department Personnel Changes.
Bobby, I have a procedural question.
Yep.
Pursuant to our policies, these captain positions were supposed to be brought to us in January.
Correct.
Why weren't they?
I think it was an oversight error.
Hopefully, we can get back on track then for next year.
Correct. Yep.
And going forward, is it the chief's intention to have three captains and the fire inspector, or is this just a one-year trial?
No, from my understanding, this is how we would operate.
Okay.
Unless something changes. But as of right now, the, the way the pay schedule is laid out is that there are four slots for that. And right now, we have a fire inspector, which is going to be occupying one of those spots. So that's my understanding of it at this time.
Okay, thank you. With that, I am looking for a motion to approve, approve the Fire Department Personnel Changes Report.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Cahill. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? All right, motion carries. Next item of business tonight is Council Reports. Would like to start.
I have nothing to share.
Short and sweet. Thank you, sir. All right, Councilmember Luca.
It's been a busy month. I, you saw the, the agenda item from the Human Resources Committee. Our quarterly police commission that the mayor and I attended for Maple Plain, our police department had our auditor's report. That was a very clean auditor's report. And in fact, Bobby, I think we either can get or have...
Yes, I just had some delivered today.
...for everybody if you want a report. There was also a nice public report that the police commission put together, and I think we can get members of the council.
That's also online.
And this is online, of course, too. The, they reported a very healthy return on our pensions, so things are strong on our, on our retirement side with the police. Cash position is good. And at the end of the year, there was a $65,000 surplus, if you will. Gary did a nice job of maintaining the budget. Police Commission recommended that that money be taken and put into capital equipment items and some in the severance, which is the fund when police retire to make payments for pieces of their accumulated sick leaves and things. So that $65,000 was excess. You may, you may say, why were, why were we $65,000 under budget, if you will, essentially? And I think a lot of that's good work on Gary's part. Some of it is, it's hard to get a handle financially on, on some pieces. We get some revenue sources from places that are unknown, and we don't necessarily budget for those, but we do seem to get some of those forfeitures and things that come in. So good position financially. And then the third item I was going to report is the Watershed Commission. I filled in for Councilmember Fay. And the Watershed Commission this month is getting ready for a 10-year review by Bowser, which is a performance review essentially, looking at a lot of the compliance issues. Is the Watershed Commission doing things, putting things together the way that state statute would say we're supposed to? And it appears that things are looking pretty good for that as well. So that's my report.
Thank you.
I have missed a lot of time. Thank you for filling in for me, personal and private. But I would just like to remind the audience or whoever's viewing on TV that the Orno Rotary is, is sponsoring a party in the park, June 2nd, Saturday, June 2nd. Live bands, food, beverages. Come on, come on.
Thank you.
I attended the Planning Commission the first week. We continue to talk about signs for the new development areas. I also attended a library conference this week that happened to have a keynote speaker who ran tech for the City of Los Angeles. So little... So, a little bigger than we are, but two ideas that I thought were really cool that came out of it. One is they use a bot technology, so a chat bot, which can speak thirty different languages because their staff can't. And so, this bot can give them resources in those languages that their citizens need that they can't. So, I thought that was kind of cool. And I know we have people who speak other languages in our city, so maybe future project, obviously way down the line. Another cool thing was that they have a system where people can report a problem in the city and it's published on their website so people can see that someone else has reported it. They can see the progress the city is making on it. So, just kind of that very cool public accountability I thought was very neat. But yeah, some, lots of cool things, so. Obviously, they have lots more resources. I'm not expecting you to implement them tomorrow.
No. I tell you what, though. You bring up a great point, Councilmember Cahill. There is some really great software, not on to the same level that Los Angeles is, but really can tackle, you know, getting good public input, whether there's things going on. A resident could go onto our website and let us know, "Hey, there's a bad pothole here." And I've looked at some of these different resources and I think maybe one day we could have something somewhat similar to that. I think, I think that's exciting stuff.
Very cool.
I as well have had a busy month. I was able to attend the regional councils, the mayor, and our topic was the city and the coming climate. So, that was very interesting. A lot of talk about right-of-ways and planting, so learned a lot. Was also able to attend the Northwest Hennepin League of Municipalities and very informative. Our Hennepin County Assessor came out. So, it was really nice, very educational. And was also able to attend the West Hennepin Chamber of Commerce. And the city was a featured speaker. So, together, Bobby put together a beautiful PowerPoint presentation. We did like a mini little State of the City and had very positive feedback about that as well. So, that was great. Also, just want to acknowledge and thank the team here. You've all been very busy. We did have an EDA meeting, which was very informative. We, our planner came in and Bobby and taught us about TIF, tax increment financing, which is very important. We also had a joint Parks Council meeting, which was crucial to our city. It takes lots of civic engagement and that was a great meeting and we appreciate their work and we're looking forward to their leadership and vision and planning with parks. So, thank you all for participating and doing your homework with all of those as well. And just a reminder that on Monday evening in the city of Independence, there will be a review concept plans meeting for the intersection improvements at County Road Ninety and Highway Twelve from four-thirty to six-thirty. And that's just an open house for anyone who's interested in the community learning about that as well. Did anyone else have any other business? All right. With that, I do not see any visitors to be heard, so I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
What is it?
DeLuca? Second.
Second by Broda. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The meeting is adjourned at eight thirteen.